Bradford, can you hear us? So we're good to go. I don't know about Bradford, but our first applicant can hear us. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting Tuesday, June 29th at 7:00 p.m. to order. Before we begin, I'd like to ask that we have a moment of silence for the horrific shooting that occurred in our village on June 10th, 2021. Thank you for that. So as we begin, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items for the commission. Applicants and members of the public. Yes. Applicants and members of the public present a present tonight remotely. For the applicants, applicants attending remotely will be muted by staff until their agenda item is called. Once called, the applicant will be unmuted to make their presentation and answer any questions to the commission. When your item is complete, which means it has been voted on, you are free to leave the meeting. Public comment will be solicited during each actionable agenda item. Once I ask for public comment on a specific item, please click Raise Hand in the Go-To Webinar in order to make public comment. Before being individually identified, all members of the public will be muted. Village staff will announce the speaker by stating their name and unmute their audio to allow up to three minutes of public comment. When called, please state your name and address for record and proceed with your comment, speaking clearly during your allotted time. Please note, importantly, please limit background noise to the extent possible when speaking. Please be sure to identify yourselves so that we know who is speaking. And do not use the Chat or Question function in Go-To Webinar as these functions will not be monitored during the meeting. And as a reminder, this meeting can be viewed live on Comcast Local Channel 18 or streamed at royalpalmbeach.com/YouTube. Okay, so let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under God, indivisible, with every right and every interest.
Thank you. Lauren, can you do the roll call, please? You can't hear me.
Said you can't hear. Bradford said they can't hear you. What?
Bradford, can you hear me now? My audio is off. My audio is on.
Bradford, can you hear me?
For any of the public watching, we're taking a few minutes recess. We have a technical issue.
Yeah.
They should be going through the chambers. It shouldn't be audio through here. It should be going through speakers, through the chambers. Randy, I know you're not on call, but we're at P&amp;Z and for some reason, nobody can hear us. Like, we're in the chambers and the audio, no one can hear us on the computer. Like, the speakers are on, like, we all have our microphones on, but nobody can hear the meeting. That's...
Can anyone hear me? Can you raise your hand if you hear me? This is Bradford. Okay. Can somebody speak into the mic to make sure that you guys are coming through?
Bradford, we can hear you now. This is...
Yes, Bradford, we can hear you. Yes, Bradford, we can hear you.
I can hear you guys now.
Yep. We got audio. Do you want me to start over or just pick up right off the top? Okay. Okay, we are back. We're going to start over from the beginning so we can make sure everyone heard all the great information. So I'm going to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order on Tuesday, June 29th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. I'd like to start with having a moment of silence for the horrific shooting that occurred in our village on June 10th, 2021. Thank you for that. So as we begin, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items for the commission. Applicants and members of the public present tonight remotely. For the applicants, applicants attending remotely will be muted by staff until their agenda item is called. Once called, the applicant will be unmuted to make their presentation and answer any questions to the commission. When your item is complete or has been voted on, you are free to leave the meeting. For the public, public comment will be solicited during each actionable agenda item. Once I ask for public comment on a specific item, please click Raise Hand in the Go-To Webinar in order to make public comment. Before being individually identified, all members of the public will be muted. Village staff will announce the speaker by stating their name and unmute their audio to allow up to three minutes of public comment. When called, please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comment, speaking clearly during your allotted time. Some important notes. First, please limit background noise to the extent possible. When speaking, please be sure to identify yourselves so that we know who is speaking. And do not use the Chat or Question function in the Go-To Webinar as these functions will not be monitored during the meeting. And as a reminder, this meeting can be viewed live on Comcast Local Channel 18 or streamed at royalpalmbeach.com/YouTube. So next, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance again. We apologize for any background noise here because it is storming. So Lauren, it's over to you for a roll call, please.
Yes, Chairman. Chairman Adam Miller.
Present.
Vice Chair Philip Markey.
Here.
Commissioner June Perrin. Commissioner David Leland. Commissioner Ray Nazareth.
Present.
Lauren McClellan, alternate one.
Present.
And Gerald Brown, alternate two.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, so first, I need a motion on the minutes from the last meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
So I have a motion made by Commissioner Markey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Nazareth. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes pass, five to zero. Thank you for that. Okay, so to our next item on the agenda, we have application number 21-43, AAR, Palm Beach PB Orthodontics. The applicant Bennett Lightning is requesting architectural approval for new wall signage for a property located at 1420 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. Middy, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is the applicant present online for PB Orthodontics?
Yes, she is.
I am, yes.
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record?
My name's Donnie Bennett.
Donnie Bennett.
Okay, thank you. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so I need to swear you in. Can you raise your right hand and also you, Bradford? Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you both. And I'll turn back to the commission and ask if there are any ex parte communications with regard to 21-43 that need to be disclosed.
No.
No.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Middy. Bradford, over to you for a presentation, sir.
Great, thank you. Hopefully, everyone can see my screen.
Yes.
The applicant is requesting architectural approval for new wall signage for an orthodontics office located at 1420 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. You can see here the signs that the applicant is proposing. The sign color will be King Triton, PPG 12425, and staff is recommending approval. With that being said, Chairman, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bradford. I understand the applicant is on the line. Does the applicant have a presentation on the project? She does not. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, do we have any comments, questions, or discussion? Start with Commissioner McClellan?
No.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Markey?
No.
Commissioner Nazareth?
None.
Okay. Now, I'm going to open the floor to public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment? Okay, I'm going to thank you, Lauren. I'm going to close the floor to public comment. So is there a motion on application number 21-43?
I'll make a motion, we approve application number 21-43.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Markey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, application number 21-43 passes five to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item, application number 21-11, AAR First Watch. The applicant Farron Signs Incorporated is requesting architectural approval for new wall signage for a property located at 11151 Southern Boulevard. Middy, over to you.
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant present online for this item? Hold on, we're unmuting our end. Mr. Gerard, could you state your name for the record for me, please?
My name is Eddie Gerard. I'm representative of Farron Signs.
Thank you, sir. This is a quasi judicial hearing. I need to swear you in. Can you raise your right hand for me, please, sir? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn back to the commission and ask if there are any ex parte communications with regard to 21-11 that need to be disclosed.
No.
No.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Middy. Bradford, back to you.
Thank you. As you stated, the applicant is requesting architectural approval for new wall signage for a restaurant located at 11151 Southern Boulevard. Here's an illustration of the sign that is being proposed. This is the east facing elevation. This here is the north facing elevation. Planning and zoning is recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradford. I understand the applicant's on the line. Does the applicant have a presentation?
I don't believe so. Mr. Gerard, you don't have a presentation, correct?
I do. My question is correct.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. So commissioners, any comments, questions, or discussion? We'll start with Commissioner Nazareth.
Done.
Commissioner Markey?
No.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner McClellan?
No.
Okay. So I'll open the floor to public comment. Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment. So I'd like, is there a motion on application number 21-11?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, application 21-11 to be approved as read.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Nazareth. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Markey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is application number 21-29, AAR Village Royale Bridge. The applicant WGI Incorporated is requesting architectural, excuse me, architectural approval for new pavers and lighting on the Tuttle Boulevard Bridge for a property located on the south side of Acme Road and west of State Road 7. Middy, it's over to you.
Thank you. Lauren, do we have applicants on the computer?
Yes, I have a few. We have Nicholas, Ron Melendez, Vincent Uriera from WGI, and Johan from WGI. Two from the Related and two from WGI.
Thank you. All of you who are going to be speaking on this item, this is a quasi judicial matter. I need to swear you in. Can you state your names for the record, please?
Good evening. This is Ron Melendez with Related Group.
Thank you, Ron.
You have Nick Dusso with the Related Group.
Thank you.
Juwan Machado with WGI.
Thank you. And Vincent, are you there?
I believe Vincent was calling in. But that's okay.
Okay, if he appears, I'll swear him in. But can you all raise your right hands for me? Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll turn back to the commission and ask if there are any ex parte communications with regard to application 21-29 that need to be disclosed at this time.
Don't know.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Middy. Bradford, over to you, sir.
Great, thank you again. The applicant is requesting architectural approval for the Village Royale Bridge on Tuttle Boulevard over the C-51 Canal, as shown here. The bridge is located south of Southern Boulevard and approximately 3,500 feet east of State Road 7. The applicant is proposing carriage style light fixtures, both pier mounted and pole mounted. Pier mounted and pole mounted. All walls and columns will be Class V finish with Sherwood Williams Marshmallow SW7001, and those are these areas here. An ornamental aluminum railing with bronze finish will also be included and lay atop of the walls along with tiles on certain areas of the walls. This is where the tiles will occur. The applicant is also proposing a decorative pattern of brick pavers, and from above, it is designed to emulate palm fronds. Staff is recommending a condition of approval to require that the applicant to obtain a South Florida Water Management District permit modification in order to make the South Florida Water Management District's approval plans consistent with the village's approved plans. In the event the South Florida Water Management District denies the permit modification reflecting the proposed changes, the applicant shall apply for modification of Engineering Permit 17-37 to ensure consistency with the South Florida Water Management District's approved plans. And with that being said, Chairman, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradford. I know we have the applicant, a few members on the line. Did they have a presentation?
We do have a presentation ready, should the commission wish to see it.
Sure. Please.
Johan, you have the presentation?
I have the presentation, if you allow me to...
Yep, I'm giving you the right.
You got it? All right. Just... I need to know which screen it's sharing. It's not giving me the indication to...
Is that your agenda, sir, that's presenting on the screen right now?
Okay. So...
There you go.
I... Are you seeing the presentation or the actual slides?
We see the slide deck, sir.
Okay. For the record, Juwan Machado, project manager with WGI, representing the applicant for the architectural changes on the Village Royale Bridge. As Mr. Bradford stated, the architectural changes are for the new pavers and lighting fixtures on the Tuttle Boulevard Bridge. The location, as recently just stated, is on the south side of Southern Boulevard on Tuttle Boulevard. The idea was to provide and give an update of the plans for the pavers installed at the bridge to show existing conditions, as you can see based on the aerial photography, matching the front ponds. This was part of the conditions of approval of the project, and we are revising the plans to match those build conditions. Along with that are some changes from the original submitted plans on the bridge. This is a cross section of what the existing plan is. The proposal is to modify the finished product on the bridge to classified paint and add light fixtures on the bridge as indicated or highlighted in the presentation. This is a cross section of the bridge. You can see the lights also on the background. Just want to point out for the record that this is an existing photo, recent photo on the site, and you can see the actual fixtures, lights mounted on the bridge. We are consistent with the rest of the light fixtures previously installed and approved on the project all through the Village Royale Development. These are some blowouts. As you can see, those lights are already mounted and existing. The project or the AR application has been reviewed by staff and received a recommendation of approval, as well as those on the TSR meeting back in May 13th. Staff recommends approval. You will leave it up to the commission if there are any questions that we can address.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'll go to the commissioners for comments, questions, or discussion. Start with Commissioner Brown.
My, my, this might be a rhetorical question, but I'm going to ask anyway. With the new addition of the new light structures and things, will there be any structural adjustment to the bridge or will affect or improve the structure of the bridge in any way, shape, or form?
None. None were necessary.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner McClellan? Commissioner Markey? Commissioner Nazareth?
Yes, I have a question. The conditional approval with the South Florida Water Management District, can you comment on that? Because that's a conditional approval.
If I could, this is Middy. If I could speak to that, this is a condition recommended by the village engineer. All this is doing is making the Water Management District permit and the village's approved plans consistent. The village engineer does not believe that there will be any reason that the permit modification is not approved, but we just need to carry the condition so that both sets of plans match, is what we're trying to do. So this is the village engineer's recommendation, excuse me, recommended condition, just because the timing of when this is going forward, this is going ultimately to council, but the timing, we don't have the approved Water Management District modification yet, so it's just to make sure that the plans at the end of the project match.
Thank you.
Correct. And to address Commissioner Nazareth's concerns, we are in direct correspondence at the time with South Florida Water Management to make sure that they have the exact same plans that had been reviewed by TSR and that you're seeing in this presentation. So those images will make it to that permit set.
Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, thank you. I like the new lights. I think they'll look great, so... Okay, great. So I'm going to open the floor to the public comment on this item. No one online? Okay, I'm going to close the floor to public comment. I'd like to request a motion to be made on this item.
I'll make a motion, we approve application 21-29 as read.
Motion made by Commissioner Markey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Nazareth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. So that is the last voting item for this meeting. Our next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be Tuesday, July 27th, 7:00 p.m. Don't miss it. And before I adjourn, don't forget, commissioners, we have a local planning agency meeting after this, so I need a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make a motion, we end the meeting.
Motion made by Commissioner Markey, seconded.
Yes, I'll second that we adjourn this meeting.
Actually, I think Commissioner McClellan said it first.
Okay, let's go.
So we have the motions made by Commissioner Markey and McClellan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is closed. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call to order the local planning agency meeting on Tuesday, June 29th at 7:00 p.m. Lauren, can you please do the roll call?
I think we're going to let the record show that everybody was in attendance for P&amp;Z is now sitting at LPA.
That's fine. And if the record could also reflect, the meeting is being called to order at 7:28.
Okay, thank you. We do have minutes. We do have minutes from the last meeting on May 25th. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the last-minute meeting.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Nazareth, seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Markey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes pass, five to zero. Thank you. I think commissioners Nazareth and Markey are trying to dominate the votes today, this evening, so I think it's funny. I think you guys got to fight back. But anyway, so, okay, item number, agenda item number, application number 21-09, zoning text, birthing center. The applicant Nelson Posada is requesting a zoning text amendment to the village code to include birthing center as a special exemption, exception, exception use in the commercial office CO zoning district, specifically requested for a property located at 1490 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. Midi, over to you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Posada, could you approach the podium behind you? Is the video on?
I do not see him on my end.
Okay, yeah.
Bradford, did you say you cannot see him?
I cannot see him on my end, no.
Can you hear?
But I can hear him.
Okay.
There he is.
There he is. Thank you, Bradford. Can you state your name for the record, sir?
Nelson Posada.
Thank you, sir. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so I need to swear you in. Can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and I'll turn back to the commission and ask if there are any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed with regard to application 21-09 at this time.
No.
No.
Thank you. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Midi. Bradford, over to you, sir.
Great, thank you. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the village's zoning code at Chapter 26 to allow birthing centers as special exception uses in the general commercial zoning district within the village. Specifically, the text amendment would add birthing centers to the list of special exception uses in Section 2689 within the general commercial zoning district, and adds a definition for the term birthing center to Section 2622. And that definition will read, "A publicly or privately owned facility, place, or institution constructed, renovated, leased, or otherwise established where non-emergency births are planned to occur away from the mother's usual residence following a documented period of prenatal care for a normal uncomplicated pregnancy, which has been determined to be low-risk through a formal risk scoring examination. Care provided in a birthing center shall be provided by a licensed physician or a certified nurse midwife or a licensed midwife. Services provided in a birthing center shall be limited in the following manner. Surgical services shall be limited to those normally performed during uncomplicated childbirths such as episiotomy and repair, and such, and shall not include operative obstetrics or cesarean sections. Labor shall not be inhibited, stimulated, or augmented with chemical agents during the first or second stage of labor. Systemic anesthesia may be administered and local anesthesia for dental block."
I'm not very good.
"And episiotomy repair may be performed. General and conducted anesthesia shall not be administered at birthing centers. Patients shall not remain in the facility in excess of 24 hours, and hospitals are excluded from the definition of birthing center, and staff is recommending approval of this application." With that being said, I'll turn the floor over to you, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradford. Appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, I'm sorry, just one, one quick clarification, Bradford. I just want to clarify for the record, the revision, I think your presentation is supposed to be for the commercial office, the CO zoning district, and a revision to 26-87, is that correct? Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
I don't know how that general commercial got in there.
I think that was the previous request, I think your slides just didn't save over. I just wanted to make sure the record is clear.
Okay.
That's correct. Commercial office, zoning district.
Okay, thank you both. Appreciate it. So I know Mr. Posada's here, would you have a presentation, sir?
Sure, I do. Yes, so, thank you all, good evening. Basically, the center that we're bringing in is a medical facility. It's a medical clinic. We have direct contracts with the hospital, the closest hospital to us obviously being Palm West. Our physicians are contracted through these hospitals, and we belong to the hospital's group contract, so the hospital, so we will only be doing births, low-risk births on a selected few patients that have no comorbidities of any kind, basically a really healthy woman. Anything above that is obviously going to the hospital, will always be at the hospital. Our birthing model is a little different than most birthing models, where we are MD-driven. We are going to have MDs at our clinic. Most of the times, these birth centers or home deliveries are usually done by midwives, and, which we're going to have, but more so, this is going to be an MD model, to bring more security, more safety standards to the practice. We've been working on this for quite some time now, and we're really eager to get this going into the community. I think it's going to be a phenomenal opportunity for people that in this community have an alternative source of birthing other than having to go through the hospitals, and especially with what's gone on over the last year, so it's something that we're looking forward to, and the providers we have coming are phenomenal doctors, so.
Thank you, Mr. Posada. Appreciate you. So commissioners, do we have any questions, comments, or discussion? I'll start with Commissioner McClellan.
Yeah, do. For Midi or for Bradford, I'm not sure. Just, what was the need for this change? Could it not fit under medical office or some other use like that?
Bradford, I'll let you respond to that one.
Yes, we did not want to, sometimes whenever we have these requests, we don't want to go too far out on the limb. We wanted to evaluate this use to see if there was any hidden pitfalls to allowing this type of a use and to fully evaluate it. That's why we wanted to make it a special exception use approval. One, for that reason, and two, to evaluate these on a case-by-case basis as they come into the village.
And the only, thanks, Bradford. The only other thing I'll add is that it's a little bit more elevated in terms of service that's provided than just a standard medical office, so that's why it's, it's being proposed by the applicant as its own specific use, and that's why he's, he's proposed his own definition for birthing center and what it does and does not include, so that our code is very clear that it's a very specific use within the CO zoning district.
In the, in the future, could it be expanded for like a service center, or would that be something different as well?
I think that would be something different, but that could be applicant requested, just as this one was.
Sorry, just curious.
No, sure.
Thank you, commissioner. Commissioner Nazareth, any questions, comments?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Yes. Mr. Fadosa, good evening, sir. Are you a medical, are you a certified medical physician or healthcare physician?
Am I? No, sir. I am a non-physician owner.
Then my next question to you is, you're making a presentation like this, and you have no physician along with you to help you with the presentation, seeing that this is all about a medical situation, medical facility?
Correct. Well, I'm handling the administrative part of the, of the practice. I don't offer or practice anything medical, but I just, I do work with the administrative side, so that's why it's being administrative, is why I'm here.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Markey?
I have no questions.
I have no questions, other than to say, thank you for offering this in our, in our community.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, so I'm going to open the floor to public comment on this item. Okay, no one's here, so I'm going to close the floor to public comment. I'd like to request a motion be made in application number 21-09.
I'm going to approve of application 21-09.
Motion made by Commissioner McClellan, seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Nazareth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all, all opposed? Okay, so motion passes four to one. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And the next meeting of the local planning agency will be on Tuesday, July 27th, 2021, after our Planning and Zoning Commission, so, meeting, so please don't miss it. I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting of the local planning agency.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Markey and seconded by Commissioner Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, drive safe.